Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am back in color. I've been gone for three and a half months. I know there's a lot of people pissed off at me, but like me, we'll get over it. First of all, let me say something. For those of you who have been listening to me and I've been gone for three and a half months, as you can see obviously what we're doing now. I'm doing live and audio was great, but you know, I needed another platform. So here we are. You know, my name is John Hargreaves. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the host of the Modern Conservative Podcast. I can be reached at themodernconservativepodcast.com. Also same captions on Facebook and Instagram and Podbean. You still will find me on Podbean. For those of you who are just looking to listen to me because you think I'm kind of an ugly dude, I'll accept that as long as you're listening, but I will still be on Podbean. It will not be live on Podbean. It will take a couple of days for things to upload it. But let's get to business. Let's do what we really like to do in Utah. Let's do it the Utah way. Virg just got mad at me the other day because I said that. Because they call him a racist for saying that. But anyway, today I have three lovely women. They're all running for state, county.
County.
Davis.
Davis County.
David, Davis County. Davis County. You know, Davis County needs some work.
Yes.
Davis County needs a lot of work. And you know, doing this for as long as the short period of time I've been doing it, Davis County, as far as I'm concerned, one of the worst counties for is school, the school system. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
You guys are kind of shy about that.
Yes.
There you go. There you go. So I'm gonna go from my right left. Introduce yourself.
My name is Wendy Leichert. I'm running for precinct seven, which is Clinton, Syracuse, West Point, and parts of Clearfield and Sunset. I have two boys in the Davis School District. And when COVID, you know, was here, I realized all the problems we have in our school system and I decided I need to get motivated and make a difference.
And?
I'm Jenny Stoker and I am running for precinct six. And similar to Wendy, when COVID hit and I saw what was happening and how our kids were being used as political pawns, it woke me up and you know, my line was crossed. And so I decided to jump in and help fix some of these issues because our kids have been politicized and I don't like that.
You said something rather interesting. What's your line that was crossed? Where did you draw the line?
I drew the line when my children were being used. And I feel like there's a lot of people out there that don't have a line because they continue to not jump in and stop this from happening to their kids. And I want everyone to draw a line. Draw a line that they can't cross.
I agree with you. I 100% agree with you. And you, my dear.
My name is Jennifer Savage. I'm running for precinct three, which is Kaseville, Fruit Heights, and Farmington. And like Jenny and Wendy, my line actually was crossed before COVID. Our district decided to bring in a platform called Summit Learning. And I started fighting that as soon as they brought it in. I knew it was not good. And so I'd already had some experiences with the district, not listening to parents. But then when COVID hit, then it really hit me that this, there is a problem. And so that's why I decided to run.
You said Summit Learning. Now, is that the entire Davis County system? Is it just certain parts of Davis County?
So it started at Farmington High. That was kind of their school to try it out. And now it's at 10 schools. I think my belief is they want to push it in all the schools. But they've kind of stepped back a little bit because parents have woken up a little bit and started pushing back. But so right now it's in 10 schools.
10 schools. So I guess my next question for Davis County, you know, doing what we do, you learn a lot. And you know, Davis County is popular for things such as SEL and CRT implementation. And it seems to me Davis County likes to change the entire county based on one or two incidents. And I think one of them, we know what they are, is the little 11-year-old girl bullied. And if you listen to the previous podcast, you'll know what I thought about bullying. And it's an evil, but it's kids being kids, you know? And as a man with two daughters and as a parent, you know, I teach my children, if you get bullied, handle it appropriately. Don't let me be your savior because if the minute I'm your savior every single time, you're gonna keep getting bullied on. So that's what I believe about bullying in Davis County. Now, look, I know every school district has issues. So what are you trying to, what are you promoting and changing in Davis County?
Well, number one, we need to get DOJ out of there.
Right.
You know?
Right.
Our board's really working for DOJ. They don't, they can't even stand up for their constituents anymore. But we just need to teach our kids to treat everybody with kindness, you know? You don't need to know who anybody has sex with, what they're attracted to, what gender they think they are. You know, we just need to be kind to each other. And SEL doesn't need to be in our school system. Parents did not delegate that to the schools.
And for those of you who don't know, DOJ here in Utah is the Department of Justice. It's not the, it's not the health education. It's the Department of Justice. And I can tell you this with the latest administration, if they're here, they're not here to do justice. So my next question is, I guess for you, Jenny.
Yes. I'm Jenny.
This is Jen. Wow, you guys are trying to confuse the hell out of this black man. Good Lord, we barely can use a computer or vote. So what are you hoping to change? I understand your kids were being used, but specifically?
So specifically, when I first started running, I had noticed when I had homeschooled through the pandemic that how much screen time they had spent at school. Every kid has an iPad on their lap. And how much of the teacher's job was being overtaken by these digital platforms? And I just realized that that is not a very conducive way for, to learn. Kids learn better when they have a teacher teaching them paper and pen.
The good old way.
Yeah, I saw that. And then I started seeing, when I started running and I learned more about the DOJ and SEL, that's social emotional learning. It was very clear that there's just a lot of waste. There's a lot of wasted money and time spent on these special interest programs being pushed on our kids, teaching them how to think and feel about everything. We have 13 elementary schools right now in our district that have eliminated at least one recess so that they can teach kids how to play right. And the idea of adults teaching kids how to play is ridiculous. They, they don't need us telling them how to play. And, and it's been proven over decades of research and stu-, sorry, studies that kids who have more unstructured play do better academically. Yet we are taking that away from them. And so we're doing the exact opposite of what we know to be true. And so this just completely confuses me. So I know there has to be an alternative motive. I don't know if it's money. I don't know if it's power. But they're using our kids for something. And I don't know if it's just to engineer the next generation of social and political activists, but...
For the other side?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
For the other side.
For the other side.
I don't want any side being taught to my kid, that's my job. That's our, us as parents, parents and guardians. It's us, it's not the public schools. Many of our teachers are amazing, but they've been trained from the beginning of their career to, that, what they're teaching and how they're teaching it is, is the best way. And it's, and it's just not. And so they, a lot of them don't even understand that they are slowly brainwashing our children into little activists. And so I just want to see all that pulled back. I want an internal audit or done so we can see where every dime is being spent. Davis County got more money than any other county for COVID. Where did that all go? Who knows? And now we are voting on a bond for millions more. And they aren't using the funds that they get now wisely. Why are we giving them more so they can operate on more debt? And you know, the rest of us have to tighten our belts because things are more expensive. Yet our government systems never have to do that.
You know, it's funny that you just mentioned something that I thought to be interesting. Davis County got more money than any other county. But yet they are the ones that are pushing SEL and CRT more than any other county. And we know there's money that comes along with pushing CRT in the schools. So that being said, and COVID is dying away, why are they still pushing it so hard, Jen?
Well, I think in Davis County because of the DOJ, that is, that's what's happening. That's just automatically brought in CRT. So I have a good friend of mine that her son, just this last week, had an experience at school where he put something on his calculator. It was, it was the N-word and he showed it to a classmate. So he had to be investigated by the Office of Equal Opportunities. So now we're taking these...
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah, no.
Who?
The Office of Equal Opportunity. So, so per the DOJ settlement, we had to hire an office. We had to, we had to create an Office of Equal Opportunities within the district.
So it's the Department of Pandering?
Yes. And so now these kids literally, they can't do anything. They, they can be reported anonymously, so they have no idea who's turning them in. And so they're gonna take these kids that are investigated and then they will educate them, you know, why is the N-word bad? And how has that been used in the past? And that's just opening the doors wide for CRT. That's CRT. But that, that's kind of how it's been brought into our district. It wasn't, and it was wide open. I mean, we were asleep when it was happening, but now we see it. But that's, that's CRT.
You know, one thing that I do when I'm speaking at events, I often mention how they tried to quiet down the Caucasian race with racism. See, there's things I can say that you guys can't say. There's some things I can probably teach that you couldn't teach. Like for example, the pornography, pornography in the schools. I've seen pictures from an actual book that was absolutely pedophilic. But the schools can teach it and show it. But if I were to take that same book and show it to your child, for example, Jen, I'd go to jail. So in Davis County, is that a problem? Wendy?
It is a problem. They passed HB 374 to, you know, get all porn and stuff out of our schools. But even the districts are fighting against it. They finally passed a policy at Davis School District. And when a parent reports a book, it stays on the shelves for up to 60 days while they're having their committee review it.
Instead of pulling off immediately, it sits in like idle, well, not idle, but still visible to the child.
Right, they can still check it out.
Politics.
Yeah. So I mean, they're still exposing our kids to this, you know, filth.
You know, I was, I did an interview with Ken Ivory a few days ago. And I said to Ken, I said, Ken, you know, yeah, we got 374 passed, but here's the problem with our bills when it comes to our children. There's no teeth in these damn bills. I'm getting sick of, tired of bills that have no teeth or they create bills and the school board can make the decision what they need to do within that bill. And that's all to interpret, that's all about interpretation. And this is the problem we have. I said, Ken, you guys gotta stop. And I look, Ken's a great guy. He's doing what he needs to be doing as a representative. He's fighting and he's big on pushing the books out of the schools. But I said, the problem is we've got to implement bills with teeth consequences. And I gave the example, me as a CEO, if I do something in my company, my board dismisses it. I mean, I get a severance package. I'm done. Why is it that doesn't work with the school board, the superintendent?
Can I say something about the consequences?
Please.
In the, in the law, it states that, you know, it's very specific about what pornography is defined as. But it also states that it's a third degree felony with a $1,000 minimum fine and 14 days incarceration that cannot be, you know, waived. You have to, you have to serve that time.
Mandatory.
Right. And then for a second offense for an adult, it's a second degree felony with $5,000. Yep, with a $5,000 fine minimum and a minimum of one year in jail. But we can't get law enforcement to enforce it.
And the reason why?
I don't know.
When you say law enforcement, are you talking Davis County?
Yep.
Right, so if we were to call the police and say, hey, this library at this school is distributing porn to children, they wouldn't do anything.
So now let me ask you guys this. Everybody, you guys go on to school boards, right? School districts. Now, a guy like me comes along and I say to you, okay, you're in now. But we're gonna hold you accountable. And I've told legislators this and I've told people that are running for office at events. Can the people count on you? Can our kids count on the three of you to do what we ask you to do when it comes to our children?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna tell you why I asked, I'm gonna tell you why I asked this question. I'm an upfront guy. I sit in front of many, many politicians who've told me they're gonna do what they're supposed to do. This is why we're in the situation we're, we're... Situation. Oh my Lord, did the black just come out of me a what? Forget, forget I went to college on that one. But this is why we're in the situation that we're in right now. Because so many politicians, we always thought we voted in good politicians. And they betray us. I'm tired of being betrayed. I'm sick of it.
Right.
And, and you guys are here because you're good people. My friend Becky Hope knows all three of you. If she was here, I would tell her thank you for having you here on my show. But since she's not here, Becky, we're going to talk as if I don't know Becky. But people like Becky Hope and others come to me and say, hey, you need to have these women on your show because they're outstanding. And having them on my show and having them exposed properly in the state of Utah could help good people out. And that's what I like doing. So my question is, when I ask you the question, will you stay true to the game?
Can I answer that?
Jen?
Okay. Well, first of all, we're not politicians. So that's number one. We're just, we're parents, right? This is...
Right, but okay, you gotta remember, this is what I do. You're not politician, I understand that. But you're a human being with feelings.
Yeah.
The problem we have with the school board system right now, and I, and I had to say this, let's not say we're not politician because you're getting voted in by the people. So you still are elected official.
Yeah.
So we say we're not a politician, you're the human being who makes decisions that affects our children. So let's go, let's keep it at that.
Okay, okay.
So though you're not a politician, because people out in La La Land are gonna say, well, she says she's not a politician. But then why are we having problems from people that act like politicians?
Yeah, okay.
You get what I'm saying?
Yes, good point, good point.
But I still love you though, Jen.
But I don't see myself as a politician.
I get what you're saying.
But no, I get, I understand what you're saying. So that's, this has been one of my biggest concerns and frustrations with our school board. There's no accountability.
Right.
And there's no, they are politicians. There's, there's a bureaucracy going on in Davis County that it's the superintendent and the president of the board and that's it. They make all the decisions, they sign all the contracts. The, the board, the elected officials, other than our board president, are really not even involved. And so we have lost all representation. And for me personally, I have values and I have principles that I will...
Wow!
I know!
That still exists nowadays?
Yes.
Holy hell! Are you married?
Yes.
Oh, damn. No, just joking.
But I, I mean, I know what it feels like to not be listened to and not be heard. I will never, ever do that to, to people. That's just, I have those principles and they run deep and that's just who I am.
And Jen, Jenny, tell the people why? You're a fantastic person for this spot.
So something that is unique about us three is nobody asked us to do this. Okay, our opponents, even if they're good, they were asked. And they were kind of pushed in, led into doing this. Not us. We saw an issue, we weren't sure how to do it, but we're, we saw an opening and we jumped in. We knew something had to change and the best thing that we could do was be one of those people that, with the power to change what was happening. One of the issues with the board is that the board president and superintendent are running it. And the rest of the board members just kind of sit back and rubber stamp everything. And one of the things that we continually hear is that they get bullied into voting certain ways. I just don't have the emotional bandwidth to care what names people call me.
That's my girl. There we go.
To, I just don't have it. I, the last few years especially have just like gotten me to a point where my bucket of cares is gone and...
I usually say something else.
I, I know. I'm keeping it PG.
It is a part, okay.
And moving here to Utah, I thought there was no way, no way that my kids would have to worry about something like CRT. We moved from Georgia where my children were minorities in the school, totally fine. But they never, ever thought about color of skin of the children that they were in class with and how they were being taught it by the public school system there. My oldest came home in first grade stressed and feeling guilt about being white. And I was shocked that they were teaching these very hard concepts to first graders because this is exactly what would happen. And it's almost as if they know that's what would happen. They want to crush the spirit of a certain demographic, try to build up one at the expense of the other. And instead of looking at these children and understanding, they don't care. They don't care. They don't base who they like to play off of, play with on their skin color. It's, hey, you like Pokemon? I like Pokemon, let's go, man.
Yeah.
You know? They don't care.
Nowadays, with the gender thing, Pokemon means something else.
I did not know that.
Hmm, yeah. Like Pokemon? That's what it means now. This is where we've gone down there in this country. I just found this out a couple of days ago, what that means now.
Well, or anything. You wanna, you like football, you like baseball, let's go. Kids aren't allowed to do that anymore. They're being taught by our schools and our teachers. And a lot of our teachers have good intentions, but it's just, it's wrong. You know, you know what they say about good intentions. I see so many kids now basing decisions and everything that they do on a lens that they've had put in front of them, a lens of race and a lens of gender. I was at a play center a few months ago and a family next to me, this little boy runs up to the table and because it was decorated in blue, he said, whoa, could we get a little more gender neutral here? And he was 10 maybe, 10? And then his mom presented cupcakes that were orange and he said, that's more like it. That's, that's, orange is a good color. And, and I just thought, this poor little boy, that's all he can see is color. And what these colors mean now to him. Whereas before it was just been like, sweet, I'm at a play place with my friends, let's go. And now he can't do that. He has been taught and now that's all he can see and focus on.
Wendy, what drives you to do this job, run for this position?
Well, you know, I, I thought I could, I could pull my kids out and I could homeschool them. But that just helps my kids. Then all the kids in society are still gonna be messed up because of all the stuff that they're pushing on our kids at school. You know, so I just decided I wanted to make a difference for all of our kids. And our constitution is based on individual freedom. You know, parents should have the freedom to choose what they want for their kids. And you know, my campaign is fully funded by myself. I haven't taken money from the teachers' unions like my competitor has. So I feel like, you know, a lot of what's going on in our school is, you know, the teachers' unions and the DOJ, of course. So...
Jenny, you said something interesting about, you're from Georgia.
No, I'm from Arizona. We moved to Georgia for several years as where three of my kids were born. And then we moved back here because the East Coast is just...
I'm from the East Coast.
Oh, I'm sorry. Growing up in Arizona and then moving, it's like moving to a foreign country.
It's a different world.
It's a different world.
It's all, if you've never lived there, if you've never lived in the South or in the East, it's a different world. And when you said, it was interesting to me when you said that, you know, your kids were the minorities in that school. But isn't it crazy? You live in a state that's 60% Caucasian, that we have in some of the, hearing some of the same conversations you hear, heard back there in a white state where there's very few blacks? Because the thing is racism works great for implementing dumb shit. It's my show, I can say it. You know, they know. Racism is used to, for, for the other side to really, let's be, you can say nonpartisan, but what you're fighting actually is partisan. Because that's gonna be your job sitting on the school board, fighting the dumb shit. That is your job. It is partisan because we know it's not the, well, we know it's not the moms and dads for the most part pushing this agenda. It's the other side. So being nonpartisan, this question I pose to all three of you, being nonpartisan, do you not fight because it's a partisan issue? Or do you, does it not matter at all?
It doesn't matter to me. I'm gonna do what's best for our kids.
Right.
Exactly, okay, good answer.
Yeah, so it really, yeah, it doesn't matter. And for all intents and purposes, I get the feeling that Republican, Democrat are just the two sides of the same coin.
It's called a uniparty.
Yeah. You know, like the horseshoe where we got the extremes here, extreme here, but they're actually pretty close together. And...
I like that. Boys and girls? I said, boys and girls too.
But I have talked to teachers and I've talked to administrators and I've said, look, I just want public education to be about education and stop with this political and social ideology being taught in every subject. And I've gotten pushback saying, well, we can't just focus on academics because the whole child is important. I said, your job isn't the whole child. The whole child belongs to the parents or the guardian. It doesn't belong to you. The child as a whole is, belongs to their family. You are paid to teach them academics. End of story. And that's all I'm asking for. I don't think that's an extremist viewpoint to say, hey, our public school's job is to teach kids academics, not how to think about political issues in the world.
So on the, for example, the board you're running for, is it seven members?
Yes.
So if, if it's a three-three tie and your vote is on the table and they come to you and say, Jen, look, you know, if you go along with this, we'll make sure you're here next year and we'll kick you down money from blah, 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 blah. What does Jen say?
Jen says, hell no.
That is recorded.
The kids can't hear this.
Oh, but they can read porn at school, but they can't hear the word hell no.
True, true.
You know?
That wasn't bad.
But that was Becky Hope, I didn't say that. But same question you, hell no?
Hell no.
Because, but here's my problem.
My language is a little more colorful at home.
Is that?
Sorry, everyone. My kids hear a lot, but they don't say it outside those four walls.
Right? And it goes for you too, as well, Wendy. So but here's my, then what, what, so why do we have so many hell yeses right now in these state boards?
They are afraid, so what we've...
Of what?
So what we've been told is and taught, as soon as you get on the board, they take you aside, this school board associations, the associations have to go also. It's a big money waster. But, and they train you how to basically not talk to parents and how not to get sued. If you, if there's a threat of being sued, well, you can't do it. Well, I say I don't care. I'm not gonna sell my kids for, for the threat of being sued. And if I get sued, fine, I'll take it clear to the Supreme Court. I don't care. If it's wrong, it's wrong. I'm not gonna do it.
If you sue it for, I, I mean, look, nobody's gonna sue you if you're doing what's right.
I'd rather get sued for doing what's right than. Than not get sued and do what's wrong.
Exactly. But listen, the thing is, we don't care. When it comes to our children, you always do what's right. And the first thing you should do is question the idiot that tells you to do what's wrong. That's your first problem. Your first vote should be to get that person off the board. That should be your first priority when you know you have somebody up there. Somebody, I won't mention his name, but he's a senior s- Utah senator. I was at him in, at, 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 at an event. And it's not Stuart Adams. Put that clarification. But he said to me one day in a meeting, he says. John, you're pretty, basically he said I was a smart ass. I said, he says.
Did you say thank you?
All the way, baby. He says, John, when you running for office? I said, so and so and so, if I ran for office, you wouldn't like me. Because I would tell on every one of your dirtbags to the people of Utah. And there's another senator right beside me. He says, wow, that's kinda rough. I said, hey, don't be a senator. Because you know what? Our job is to call you out and you, when you're not doing your job, it's my job and I don't get paid to do this. But I do it out of sure fact that I believe in the constitution and I believe you have responsibility to we the people. And I want you to uphold it. And I believe that with the school boards as well. Whether you say you're non partisan or not, I still expect you to do what the constituents that put you in office want you to. When I say want you to, I don't mean some of this stupid stuff that people may want you to. But when it comes to our children and your common sense comes into play. Use your common sense. And this is where we've gotten lost, our common sense. Nowadays, we're talking about there's three, four, five, six, seven genders. Why are we having this conversation?
It's infinite. It's not, it's not three, four, five.
Right, you mean by the end of the show, there'll be another. Point, 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 five hundred more. So, but the thing is, and the school boards are a lot of the problems. These school boards are allowing things to go on the schools that we don't want. And I still have not yet figured out why are they doing? Are they getting paid a lot of money to put these books in, in the libraries? Is that, they're getting paid by.
These books are attached to funding. So like they'll get.
Like the COVID funding, so there's always an attachment of federal money to it.
And the surveys too.
So our public schools love surveys. They love standardized tests.
Data on the children.
They love getting data on the children.
Now, why is that so bad? Why is that so bad case? People don't understand why it's so bad.
None of their business. It's none of their business who my child is sexually attracted to. It's none of their business how much their parents make. It's none of their business. About anything that has to do with my child's personal life.
Because she's the same way. You know, and I love women that fight. And what I mean by this, when I mean by women that fight, you know, look, you guys said something that was obvious, you know. You don't do this because uh you don't make a lot of money. You're not gonna do this because you really didn't wanna do it, but you felt they needed, had to be done. And this is a sign of a testament of a fighter. Because if you won't do it, damn it, we will. And that's the mentality that from my chair and the people that I represent and, and. Associate with, that's how we think. That's all, that's how we all think. And you can't be afraid of people seeing you as a. So called book banner when it comes to your children. I'll take it. I'll ban every damn one of them. I'll take it.
They never should have had pornographic books in there in the first place.
It, it should, yeah, that conversation, we should never ever be in this conversation.
Why are we talking about this? Why are we talking about this in what's supposed to be one of the most conservative states in the US? In the nation, yeah. Why? Why is this a problem here? It shouldn't be. Utah should be a leader. In conservatism and saying, no, we're not going to play your game with our kids just because we get funding. And we're, again, where is this funding going? Because I don't see it going into the classrooms. I don't see the teachers getting pay raises. I don't see. It being utilized well. Some of our schools don't have AC. What, how is that possible?
I heard about that. That's literal.
That's why we need a five hundred, almost a half a billion dollar bond.
For that in new schools. But we got seventy two million in S R funds, so why, why do we have any schools without AC now? Why do we have classrooms with over forty kids in a?
It's twenty twenty, right? A school with no air conditioning. And we wanna give forty million dollars to find out why the water is draining in the Great Salt Lake. Far as I'm concerned, that's children money. That money should went to the kids.
Well, and we have departments like the social emotional learning department where you walk into that office and they have yoga mats and they have incense and it's like such a. Hoity toity, obnoxiously pretentious space. I wanna, this is not literal, but I wanna burn it to the ground.
You know what? Utah has lost its damn mind. I'm telling you point blank, lost its damn mind. Let's talk about David's parents. Now, I was actually talking a little earlier to somebody else, actually before we came up to the studio and uh. I've often wondered why, actually I know why Davis County is having the problem that they're having right now. It's cuz of the parents. A lot of the parents afraid, oops, afraid to stand up. Afraid of being called racist, homophobe, xenophobe, transphobe, you know, you name it, they're afraid of it. So they allow their kids to be exploited just to save face. The old saying, cut your nose off despite your face, this is one time you cut your nose off. So how do we get the parents activated in Davis County? What do we need to do? How do we do it? Because I've been asked questions, how do you get people activated period in this state?
So John. So people are asleep. Um, we are taught, you know. If you're a member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints, we are taught to be kind. We're taught to um. Love everyone, turn the other cheek and, and if you do anything other than that. Then you're not Christ like. I mean, I'm, I'm an active member of the church, but um. That's not what Christ would want us to do, right? But a lot of people really do feel that way. I have a lot of friends that I have been trying to wake up. And they're still asleep. And it's sad because I, I have, the information is there. There are a lot of people that are trying to educate us parents and. It's just sometimes a lot easier just to close your eyes and look the other way and still just hope that your kids aren't gonna be affected by what's going on in the schools. And, and you hope that what you're teaching at home is gonna counteract what they're getting at school, but it is so. So intense in the schools that we cannot do that anymore. We have to fight back.
You know, I'm gonna say this in full, for full transparency, I'm Muslim. And there's nowhere in hell, I'm gonna bury my head in the sand because my religion told me so. As my fact, my religion tells me to cut their heads off when it comes to our children. Now, okay, I don't mean that literally for me, but I will say. God has a funny way of giving insane men kids. And people need to get insane when it comes to their kids. But here's a problem. It's not PC. It's not PC or it's not spiritual, spiritual, or it's not brotherly or sisterly. And this, and, and you're right. But that's not even with, just with the school districts. It's just, it's with the voting and the way we do things here in our state. Case in point. Spencer Cox, Mitt Romney, Blake Moore. So it all trickles, I mean, this all trickles into education. It all trickles into our politics because. Whether you're non partisan or not, and this is outside the realm of the school district, it affects us. It affects our kids. The problem is people putting their head in the sand, in my opinion, across the board on every damn issue that affects us. So Wendy.
If they're not awake now, I don't know how we're ever gonna wake them up. But what they need to do is they, if they don't have a backbone enough to say something or do something. They need to vote us in so we can take care of it.
I second that. I mean, the thing is, but here's, but then again, here's another problem. Not only do they bury their he- their head in the proverb, in the sand. They won't vote for you though. And we learned that, that is the problem. They still won't vote for you. They'll still vote for that jackass. That's causing problems on our children in our society, in the state of Utah. And you mentioned we're supposed to be so conservative. Oh, that's gone.
I think a lot of people have equated conservative, if they belong to the LDS faith, well, they must be conservative. Well, if they have Republican next to their name, they must be conservative. And people need to stop thinking in those terms. We're past that. I have no religion that I belong to. Where is the fire in the LDS church? I love my friends and neighbors that are LDS, but I will burn every bridge I have to fight for my kids. Where is your fire? Where is it? That's what I, I keep asking people. I, I have neighbors, oh, thank you for doing this because I, I just could never like, why? Why could you never do this for your kids? If not for them, then what? Where's, like I keep saying, where is your line? How far does this have to go? And so, does it have to go further before people wake up? Maybe it does. I, I'm at that point now. Um, I'm still fighting, I'm still going to speak out, but maybe it has to get worse than it already is before people finally think. Oh, I shouldn't vote for this person just because they belong to my faith. Oh, or I go to the same church building and they're really nice in person, so they must be. All about what's good for my kids. It's not so. It's just isn't. If, if your. Person you're voting for is backed by the establishment, they are not going to do what's right. Most of, most. Most times.
Well, and people need to find out where, where the candidate is on their issues, what they care about. Don't just vote for somebody because you know him, right? Or you think you know him.
Well, they, they assume that they're going to be conservative in their voting. Um, because they have the R next to their name or because they belong to the LDS church. Not everyone in the LDS church is your friend and has your best interests at heart. One hundred percent, the government does not have you and your children's best interests at, at heart. So don't trust them.
And you know, people need to learn association, you know. There are actually bad LDS people that go to prison, believe it or not. There are bad LDS people that actually kill people. Not everybody else. It's truly LDS in faith and practicing. But the problem is, you know, a guy puts on a tie, he slicks back his hair and he says, my name is Mitt Romney. Or.
Perfect teeth. I don't know why that bothers me. It just does.
Well, when you stole that much money from the government, you can buy all the teeth you want. But the thing is, you know, that's, and this is how people in Utah vote. Uh, when I'm speaking out to people and I'm in audience and I don't know if you guys been in an event where I'm speaking, but I just call it like it is. And this is what everybody needs to do. Get off their ass. Uh, sorry if your kids are listening, but, but until, if me saying ass offend you. Then you should have your asses down at the school board getting those damn books out of the schools. So if you're offended by what I just said, well, you know what, uh, you'll get over it. If you don't, email me. And maybe I'll cry for you. But the thing is, this is a problem with Utah and this is why we can't get the good candidates in. This is why we cannot get the solid candidates in, solid candidates in the state of Utah because people wanna vote for. Like, for example, who's your, who's your opponent? Or what seat you've.
Julie Powell is her name.
What's her history?
She's an attorney. She's just worked in the schools a lot.
Good person, bad person?
She's good. I really like Julie.
So why do you wanna unseat her?
She, so she's not the incumbent, so we just, we're both new.
Oh, so she's.
So none of, so out of the four open seats, none of the incumbents are running. Because they have messed up our district so bad that they're all leaving. Our superintendent left. Our school board's starting to leave. They're just gonna hand us this mess, you know, this nice mess and say, here you go. Clean it up.
So they need to be in jail.
They really all do.
Or sued.
They need to be.
Or some kind of punitive. Remedy for them.
For what they've done to our children, yes.
You know, you should actually uh. Let us know somehow know who they all are for those who don't live in Davis County. And then we can uh make sure um. Others know who they are, even with the out of the school board. Because here's the thing, if we can figure out to get people activated, I want them to have a hard time getting a new job. Because they obviously they can't run the school board with a damn. Why would any company want them working for them? That's just me. Jenny, you about to say something. I see it creeping. I see it creeping. Go ahead and say it.
So our current um superintendent. Linford. He was part of the problem that brought the DOJ in. He dropped the ball and was, then he was.
Is that the school part with the little girl?
With the racism.
He was in direct line. He should have been there and handled that situation at his level and he did not. And for not doing his job, he got promoted. And now he makes three hundred thousand dollars a year.
In Davis County.
In Davis County.
And why are we paying the administration so much when we have kids, forty, forty kids in a class?
Back up something. Did you say three hundred thousand dollars? As in dead presidents and greenbacks, uh Benjamins? I didn't miss anything on this?
I don't, I don't understand it either. It, it's m- mind blowing.
Who sits there in their salaries?
The school board.
Oh, the Foxus Garden and Hen House? Really?
They hire the superintendent and they pay, pay the superintendent.
Is that legislature?
I think that's, I mean, I think that's just how it is.
So what's the, I'm gonna ask you, okay, I'm gonna ask a question. What's the average salary of a school board member?
You get three hundred dollars a month. So we're not doing it for the money.
So you gotta work for tips?
I work for the benefit of being able to say, you're fired, you're fired. I don't care what you say, I don't care what you say. That's what I'm doing.
I like that. I would do that for free. I would, if I could, look, if I could do that. And alleviate a lot of headaches, I would do it for free. So in the school board, West Jordan Granite School District, oh, not Granite School District. They would never have me on that board. They would fight me tooth and nail because I even tell the superintendent, dude, I know I just, just a board man, but today you're fired. You know, I'll use my black privilege on you. You're fired. That's what I'm gonna do. But back to serious business. But seriously, three, three hundred dollars for you guys and three hundred thousand dollars for the uh superintendent.
When our teachers are leaving, we can't keep teachers in, we can't, our veteran teachers are leaving.
And why is that? Because Davis County is so back ass backwards?
Yes, it's a combination of, you know, most teachers don't get in for the pay. They know they aren't. They wanna be teachers. They like. The idea that they're creative, they, they're creative souls. I am not, so I don't get that, but um. I substitute in the district. I loved what, doing that, you know, changing classes and. And working with kids under fifth grade. That was great. Over that. Not so much. Well, after fifth grade, they all get bigger than me and it's just not fun.
And so does their mouths. So there's a mouth.
So do their mouths.
Oh, my lord.
But. Our veteran teachers aren't allowed to teach. They're told what to teach, how to teach. When they have years of experience. And learning from trial and error, what works best in their classroom and they're not allowed to do that anymore. And we've heard teachers say they have left because they can't even discipline kids anymore. Specifically minority children. They are specifically told, you are not allowed to discipline them. Therefore, you can't teach. Because if you can't discipline kids in the class to keep control, there's no teaching going on. There's no learning and there's no teaching. And so they're leaving.
Almost switched topics. Well, it's the same topic, but my question is to you guys, have you heard of the ethnic studies? With Sandra Holland, Kurt Colmore.
I've heard ethnic studies.
It's, it's a comedian. That they voted on last session and um.
That will be implemented in everything.
That's, that's how they're gonna bring CRT in, right?
See now. See, now, and before we go into further, I explain how I got involved, well. Kurt Colomore called, Senator Colomore called me. He said, hey, would you be interested in speaking at the Capitol, um, this bill? So I said, hmm, sure. So actually, no, what happened was it was an interview, well, Spencer Cox is front of the Capitol these days, saying we're gonna form a new committee based on, you know, ethnic studies. But as I'm walking up this, to this, this, this hearing outside the Capitol, and it was in the winter time too, I see black people walking up to this hearing. And I literally said to myself, this is not good. Because then I knew what was going on. So I pulled Colomore to us and said, dude, this is about CRT. He's John, it's promises, not a C T. I said, Kurt, I'm no dummy. You don't call it CRT, well, then I'll call it CRT Lite. He says, no, 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 he's, I'd like for you to sit on the committee, blah, 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 blah. Senator John Johnson is endorsing it. But John had the bill, Senate Bill two fifty-four. That was the bill to keep that bill, I think their bill was, I can't remember which one the ethnic study bill was. That bill was designed, John's bill was designed to be the teeth, the control. The bill that they were pushing ethnic studies. Well, I don't know if you knew about this, but what happened was in in session, in hearing, we were all speaking on the bill, how we were agai- against it. So they, they went for it and they voted, yeah, 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 passed. So we're thinking, I'm thinking, okay, we have John's bill. John's bill is, is the teeth to the bill that we don't want. John gets ready to speak. They shut it down. Shut it down. So, this is going on, and now as we speak today, they're having these meetings. And uh, it is the biggest joke that I've ever seen in my life, and it's straight pushing CRT, equity, diversity, and all the other garbage. What bill is that? SB two forty-four. That's, 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 for you guys who don't know, that's my producer sitting on the side right there. Just give me what I know. She, she just kinda teaches me or tells me when I don't know something, which is not often though either, so. Yeah, and see, and you so, but you know, when Sandra Holland and those alike push these bills, they push them to people's emotions. And this is when we get garbage. And I'm so sick of, so what I need when you guys, and if I'm gonna fight in Davis County and do work in Davis County, I need good people, good board members that when I say I'm gonna do something, I can say it with confidence, me, Becky, and others, and when we don't want something, because you got Sandra Holland.
And none of those legislatures were gonna vote no, because they would have been racist.
Exactly right. But when a black man says it, what are you gonna call me? I'm in freaking Utah, Steve Handy called me, Andy. Brian Shaw calls me.
You can't legislate morality. You can't put it into law. The more laws they put into place and the more legislation that they pass trying to regulate it, the worse it gets.
Do you ever wonder if they have children? Because they implement bills as if they either don't have children, they think their children are protected from the, the lunacy that they, they're promoting, or they just don't care.
They are protected because most of their kids go to private schools, and private schools actually are accountable to the parents because the parents do actually like directly
Pay them.
We pay too, but because it goes to the government first and then they get to divviate out, the schools pander to whatever the government wants. But these people's kids are in private schools. They don't suffer. The, the stuff doesn't get taught in private schools. Academics get taught in private schools. That's why private schools excel. That's why the kids in private schools go to top schools, top colleges, because they actually just focus on academics. They get to master their subjects. Instead, our kids get to master nothing. They get taught very little of academics and then mostly social justice and then academics sprinkled in there.
Before I move to my next topic. So my child, my kids, my oldest, for example, they've, they go private school. Because I could control, I have a better chance of controlling that private school with money. And so does the other parents. If we don't like something, they need our money. And if, for example, I'm just gonna use Waterford as an example, example, it's just an example. We can go to the chancellor and say, hey, we don't like what you're teaching. That twenty-six thousand dollars a year we give you, there's about thirty of us gonna pull it away from you. So they don't play those games. They don't play those games. But in the, even charter schools, they're not so chartered, they're not so friendly as you think, because they still get money from the federal government. And the federal government's still trying to implement their fingerprint on, on their curriculum. So so my next topic is homeschooling. Wendy, how do you feel, what do you feel, how do you feel about homeschooling?
You know, I would do it if I wasn't working, but you know, it's hard to homeschool when you're at work all day. Um, I, I don't wanna sit my kids in front of a computer all day and have them do schoolwork like they do in our public schools, but I would like to reduce some of that in our public schools and less electronic devices.
I actually pulled my two youngest back out and I'm homeschooling this year, um, and I'm working on my uh, seventh grader, getting her out, we just gotta get a few of her friends out at the same time. But I love homeschooling. I, I love that my kids um are, to me, they spend at home three, four hours tops on homeschool. And we went device-free this year, so they, they have no apps, nothing.
Old school.
Old school. We are just reading books, we are pencil and paper, writing, um, worksheets, having discussions with each other. My other friends that homeschool, they, we, you know, they discuss the stories they're, they're, they're working on. It's a good community here in Utah. That funding, if parents actually got the funding that the schools are getting per kid, we could make things amazing. My kids go to us, uh, uh, an arts academy just like once or twice a week. They do theater, and they get supplemental math and science and everything like that. And this was just started by a few moms. And the parents don't, beyond like the tuition for the full year, we don't have to pay for anything else, the teachers don't have to supply anything. It's all supplied by what they get from the parents for the full year. And so, like, you're able to send your kids to private school and you're still paying taxes for the public schools. If that was actually reoriented and every parent was given the option and said, here is the eighty-one hundred dollars that the school gets um, for your child. I mean, parents could start their own little private schools and pay a teacher twice what they're getting to teach ten kids instead of thirty. And they don't want that to happen because they know that that's exactly what happened. If, if parents were able to utilize the funds that they should be able to utilize and do with what, what they want.
Are you a stay-at-home mom?
No, I work part-time, um. But because I've been able to make good friends that have homeschooled the entire time, they have helped me out. And then because I work at a hospital, it's twenty-four hours, so I can fudge my schedule around my children.
Jen, your thoughts on homeschool? We've got about three minutes.
Okay, I'll hurry. So last, last year, my, I had to pull my son out because I hate the Summit platform, and so I was, I was homeschooling him. He was on, doing Davis Connect, but I sat with him every, I mean, every subject, every time. I felt safe that way. I felt like he was safe in our home, and this year he's back at school. Um, I would homeschool if, you know, there were so many variables. There's, there are so many variables, but I, I would because I just, I feel like we i- it's a safe environment for our kids, and that's what we want. And that's how the schools used to be. I felt safe sending my kids to school. I don't anymore.
I mean, I'm a big fan of homeschooling. I'm gonna try with other stuff I got going on to create a homeschool and implement programs where parents can work at home, because one of the, one of the reasons why we don't have as, as many family homeschoolers as they want, as we want, is because finances. So if we can figure out a way to um create revenue for these families, so one of the parents could stay home and homeschool their children two or three days a week. I'm gonna figure it out. I'm actually almost, I'm almost there. I'm almost there. But uh, I truly believe that, you know, as a conservative and as a parent, my job is not only to protect my kids, but those kids around them. Because uh, this world is going crazy right now. You know, in my last few minutes, I wanna spend a couple minutes, you know, let people know, Wendy, how they can get in touch with you, learn about you.
Uh, my, my web address is wendyfordSD.com, and four is spelled out. My phone number and everything's up there if, if they need to call me. My email address is wendyleichert@protonmail.com. And I'm with precinct seven, vote for me.
And Jenny?
Uh, my website is votenystoker.com, and you can get in touch with me there, and my email is PB and J six, that's six spelled out, that's
Peanut butter and jelly?
Paul, P is for Paul, that's my husband. Um, his middle initial is Bruce, uh, that's the B, and the government sent our, our taxer taxes back that way one year, so, as PB and J. And there's six of us, so PB and J six.
Okay, mine is savage for Davis, the number four, savagefordavis.com. And then that's also my Facebook, savage for Davis, and then I have a link on my website that, that takes you to my Facebook page.
And that's what we really need, some savages. We need savages. We need women that don't give a damn. We do the right thing, and then, you know, we all follow you. The thing is, you know, before I go, I've told people many, 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 many times when I'm speaking. You do your job like you're supposed to, your next reelection will be the easiest reelection in your life. You screw up, it's a done daughter.
As it should be.
And uh, I wish you ladies luck, and uh, if you need me, my agent is right there to my right. You can get in touch with her, and she will uh, get me the message. And for those of you out there who listen to us, you know, I'm glad to be back. Been a while. I know I'm a jerk. I've got the emails. I did. I'm a jerk, but I'm back. And uh, I hope to do great things with the state of Utah and the people in the state of Utah, and we'll keep spreading our conservative message, doing what's right for our children, our God. My name is Jonathan Harvey, and I'm your host of the it's been that long, the Modern Conservative Podcast, and I'll see you guys on Monday.